Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff in attendance. We have a lot of visitors here attending this evening. Good evening to all of you and certainly good evening to everybody watching from home and welcome to the October 2nd, 2023 Extra Select Board Meeting. I'll start the meeting by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone, and sorry about being late. Sometimes soccer practice runs a little over.
No problem. To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
And Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. My name is Nico Papakostandis. And with us this evening is our Finance Director, Corey Stevens. Good evening.
Thanks.
And Corey is filling in for our Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, who were presently at an ICMA conference. An ICMA is the Intercontinental City/County Management Association, which comprises of about 11,000 members. And they are made up of city managers, town managers, administrators. So all the members of ICMA are managers and administrators, but not all managers and administrators are in ICMA. And we're very fortunate that our Town Manager is a member of the ICMA, and he's brought Assistant Town Manager Roy with him. It's an excellent opportunity. There are many seminars and workshops over the course of the few days they're there. They get to collaborate and catch up with colleagues, brainstorm, and see that some of the issues here in Exeter and also in New Hampshire, New England are being felt in other parts of the country. So it's really exciting, and we'll look forward to their feedback when they get back. But that's where they are this evening. But Mr. Stevens will be filling in, and we're happy to have him here this evening.
Happy to be here.
Terrific. I now open it up to public comment, and this is an opportunity for anybody in the public that would like to step forward. We do have some guests that are going to be speaking to us very soon. But if there's any other members of the public, and I'm looking online, I don't see anybody on Zoom. Just confirm that. And, yeah, okay. So we don't have any proclamations or recognitions this evening. I would jump to the approval of our Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of September 25th, and I'd ask the board first if there are any amendments or revisions. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Extra Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of September 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
So motion, second, and discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. We have no appointments this evening. We have one resignation to consider from the Communications Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, Chris Ziegmont is no longer able to serve on a third committee. He's already serving on the Sustainability Committee as well as a Budget Recommendations Committee, and his work schedule has made it tough for him. So he has tendered his resignation from the Communications Committee. He did have a lot of good input, though, over the last year, and worked with Martha and Bob and the rest of the committee in putting together their first part of the plan for us. So we thank Chris for his service. And I would entertain a motion to accept Chris Ziegmont's resignation from the Communications Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, and Chris, again, we thank you for your service. With us this evening, we're very privileged. Before we get into our discussion items, we have Bill Jordan from PEA, who is here with his history class. And periodically, Bill, I know you've brought your classes here. We love it when you do that, and thank you. So we're happy to see you all this evening. You sent us a series of questions in advance that I think the board would like to read aloud and try to answer them to the best of our abilities. And we would welcome you up to the microphone if you have any follow-up questions or any additional questions. So with that, I'm gonna take my questions back. The first was, are there any plans to address traffic flow around the bandstand downtown to improve pedestrian safety? And Selectwoman Belanger, you are working on?
I am.
Something now?
Now I can give part of my report for this evening early tonight. As a matter of fact, good timing for this question because Wednesday, there's going to be an open house on a study that's being conducted. So it's open to the public. You guys could go there, and the hours are going to be from noon to 2:00 and 4:00 to 6:00 with no agenda. There'll be storyboards in places where you can leave questions and things like that. And then at 6:30, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Town Hall again, there's going to be approximately 20-minute presentation with the Stanic, the company that has the bid for this study, will do a presentation on their approach, and then there'll be a Q&amp;A after that. And the study is just for kind of the Portsmouth Ave downtown area. Parking, if people stay in parking spots all day long, is that compounding our parking issue? I know one of your questions specifically was the bandstand and the traffic around there, and that's going to be looked at and look at alternatives. So does anyone have any questions about that? Or are you good with the information I've provided you so far?
Is it too late to answer the questionnaire?
They could answer the questionnaire, the survey? Yes, absolutely. There's a survey. Go to the town website, and on the second fold, if you will, if you scroll down a little bit, there's a survey there that you could take.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question that was?
Do we want to ask if there are follow-up questions to that specifically?
Yeah.
I have a follow-up.
Sure. Sure.
Because I know they have a follow-up, they're being shy.
Okay, then.
Can you just come up to the microphone, Mr. Jordan? Thank you.
Have there been any kind of accidents there? That was a concern of the kids that they've been trying to cross the street there, and it seemed like it was dangerous, so they're curious about.
Are you trying to cross, like, into the bandstand?
Or? Or out the crosswalk itself? Because we do have a problem with people not using?
Not using the crosswalk, it's their fault.
No, 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 no.
In general. It's kids, it's people visiting, yes.
Yeah, and so what I will say to that is there are a lot of other intersections that we're dealing with that are actually a lot more dangerous. But if there are a number of complaints or if you have, you know, instances or incidents, it is really helpful and good to know about.
Yes.
Well, I'll just add, as I was walking down here, one of my guys was standing, ready to cross, just above the crosswalk, so be a good reminder.
Did it not trip the light? I know, it's, it's.
Yeah, I'm gonna say this. It's gonna be slightly controversial, but I'm gonna say this. I have a long-term dream for this town of bumping the bandstand over slightly, connecting it to the Town Hall with a swath of lawn, and that would eliminate a lot of the pedestrian issues.
Dan, those are fighting words.
I know. It's not something that I can accomplish on my own or even this board can accomplish on its own. The voters of the town would have to do that. By the way, if you all are 18, you could vote in town elections every March. So that's something that I think would make a lot of sense for the town. But again, the position of the bandstand and the way the traffic rolls around it, it's something that a lot of people in this town, I will acknowledge, they're kind of, they like it that way. To me, it would make more sense, though, to connect the bandstand to the Town Hall with a bit of a lawn, and it would become the real focal point and the centerpiece of the town. So that's just a personal thing that I'd love to see. But I by no means am saying that that's something that we're going to try to do anytime soon.
So one of the things I've learned since I've been on the board is I thought you talk with folks around town, and they tell you that a crosswalk might be good here or a light might be good there, and it sounds good. But as our interim Public Works Director is standing at the podium from not only he but his predecessor, I've learned that sometimes these things that sound good are even making more dangerous. So I'm wondering if that's why you're at the podium.
No, it was just a reminder to the group that the bandstand intersection was looked at just a couple of years ago for any type of improvements. And where we were seeing the most of the accidents in that report was where the people that park right there on Water Street at the bandstand, when they're backing out because you've got three lanes of traffic and you've got Front Street trying to turn left, and it creates a little bit of havoc there. One of the suggestions is maybe you want to try to eliminate parking right there. But parking is a premium, and we didn't do that. But those recommendations are in the, I don't even know what it was called, Intersection Analysis, it's our Phase 1. It did not talk about how to adjust traffic there. This was just the intersection and see what type of improvements we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a story, too. And note, Dan, you can't move that bandstand.
I don't think he was trying to move it. It was a green space to it.
Well, just nudge it over and connect it with some crap.
At one point, we were talking about the same subject, how to make the bandstand area safer, and decided to try to make it a roundabout. And so we set up cones to, you know, send people around this way and figured out, you know, which way we wanted traffic to go. And it worked really well. When I come down Front Street, I never, ever, ever turn left at the bandstand. It's just too freaky. With this roundabout, it was really easy to do. And so I was very interested in that. But the thing that happened is a popular person was standing near the bandstand, and the people would stop to talk to him. So that just backed up all the traffic. And so the outcome was that people complained about it and said it didn't work. But I think, I thought it did.
And I'll just say, I thought Dan's idea was visionary. When he explained that to me years ago, I could see it being a nice green space. And I still think it's not a bad idea, it's just making it work and getting other people on.
It's just a political third rail.
I know it is, but I couldn't envision it, so anyway.
I like the glass, grass idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you saying that, Nancy.
Anything else on that? Hope to see you there on Wednesday. Just go up to the mic, and people can hear you at home. And while she's getting up there, the other thing is the, if you don't watch our Bi-Weekly Reports at Exeter TV, does? They're really great to watch, and they do have a segment. And they interviewed some people, asking their opinion about parking and things. So it would be interesting to watch.
Okay, my question is very direct, but is the study solely on parking?
No, parking, pedestrian, and traffic flow.
Bicycles are included.
Good question, thank you.
Does the study include the flow at night and in the day, or just in the day?
They did. They're looking at morning, early morning, late morning. They looked at afternoon and at night.
Great questions. Anything else?
And definitely try to come to the Town Hall at one of those times on Wednesday, because you can leave your thoughts. They're gonna have cards there.
So the next question is, have you observed polarization in the Exeter community government? That is anything like the polarization we've been hearing about at the national level? I'll weigh in, but I'm gonna see if anybody else wants to go first.
I would just, my short answer would be no. It's not as bad as at the national level.
That would be my answer as well. I haven't seen it, and I'm very thankful for it, too.
Oh, I would disagree.
Okay.
I think it has gotten better, and I think that there are a lot of, you know, it's harder to be rude and nasty in person to some people, you know, if that is the kind of interaction. And we saw a ton of polarization and pushback. And frankly, you know, it was really hard during the COVID pandemic. We were the first town in, one of the first towns in New Hampshire to call for the governor to issue a, or to call for a state of emergency. We were one of the first towns to implement a mask ordinance.
First town.
We, that, yes. And it was really divisive and pretty horrible, actually. So there was that component, and I do think, you know, the pandemic certainly isn't over. We're seeing COVID spikes, but I think we are in a much better position as a country. We have tools to fight this. And I think that it is, from my perspective, it is much better to be in public office now than it was three years ago. It was hell.
I wasn't on the board during that time, so.
So I agree with my three colleagues who disagreed with each other. It is a lot better now. But Selectwoman Cowan is correct. And for those of us that sat on the board during the pandemic, we were the only state, New Hampshire was the only state in New England that did not have a mask ordinance within the first couple of months of the pandemic. See, in all the other states in New England, some had Democratic governors, some had Republican governors that passed a mask ordinance for the safety of their people. And to take the pressure off of the local government, local business owners? Unfortunately, that didn't happen here. And we were, we were not the first. There was a city that passed one, and it went to court, by the way, and they prevailed. But we were the first town. Exeter was the first town. And Selectwoman Cowan's absolutely right. It was a minority of the people in this community. It was a small number of people. But similar to what you see in the national side of things, right? It's the loudest, the smallest groups oftentimes the loudest. And we were meeting via Zoom, and, you know, there's no accountability when you're looking at somebody face-to-face or you're standing in a mic, or you're making the effort to leave your house to come down to a meeting. And, yeah, it got pretty contentious at times. There were things that were said that were inappropriate. There were certain members of the board at that time that received inappropriate emails. There were members of this board who had personal property compromised. But that's not our community. So that's why I can agree with Selectwoman Belanger and Selectman Chartran is that that's not our community now, and it wasn't before that. It was then. It was a pandemic. Some of us, you know, we deal with the town side of things, but, you know, we attended school board meetings. In part, some of us have kids in the schools, and some of us were just standing, you know, with our elected officials on the school side of things. And they went through it much worse than we did. But that's over. I think that, you know, hopefully, we don't see that again. So I guess right now, in October of 2023, no, I don't think we have that sense of polarization here. Selectman Chartran?
And the reason that's over is not just that the pandemic's over, but there was a vast, you were talking about the minority that was very loud. The vast number of voters turned out and voted for elected officials, both on this board and in the town, as well as on the local school board and the cooperative school board for the public schools. The voters turned out, and they rejected those officials, some of whom were incumbents, who were the most divisive. They chose overwhelmingly to elect officials who were looking for common sense solutions and trying to meet the safety of the public and the students in the schools while at the same time trying to allow the most choice. So those elected officials that were most flexible but at the same time concerned with public safety, they prevailed in the election that followed this divisive period. And that really sent a message to all elected officials that you had best look for the best solutions and the most moderate solutions while at the same time attending to public safety of the town or the students. It was really an inspiring election that happened in, I think it was 2022. But there may have been an election in 2021 as well that was very inspiring. So that, to me, was a sign that by no means would the voters of this town and the surrounding towns tolerate that kind of divisive behavior from their public officials. It was a resounding message, in my estimation.
Well, I could speak to the state level. New Hampshire has a 400-seat House of Representatives, and again, well, yeah, they were the majority then, refused to do anything remotely. So we went through trials and trials and trials of meeting in large, open-air spaces like at UNH on their soccer field and at the Sportsplex in Bedford with six-foot spacing all around. And it made voice votes quite difficult. And so we ended up having remote control so we could cast our votes either by roll or division, which is you register your vote, and it's just counted as a Democrat or Republican. Not, your name is not attached. So that was, that period of time was rather nasty at the State House with people that were trying to stay safe, people who had medical conditions that prevented them from coming and sitting shoulder to shoulder at the State House. And we came back as soon as the Speaker said it's time to go back.
And we came back as soon as the Speaker said it's time to go back. So that got, that was, that was pretty.
Didn't we have a Speaker of the House that died of COVID?
In fact, we did. The first meeting that we met, we were in our cars and he gave the, the Speaker was elected from the body. He gave his acceptance speech and we were going to meet the next week or two later. And he died a week after he was elected. And so we got his pro temp speaker or we had another election. But yeah, there was that and lots of denial over just how, what caused this stuff.
But I think in our collective memories, maybe that was probably the worst time we've gone through as far as something like that. So hopefully it was just that one time and it won't in the future become a new norm like we're seeing in other. I'm assuming you guys are thinking about what's going around in the country in different states and things. So yeah.
And there's always detractors from some issue that we have before us, but it never gets to the point of getting nasty letters or, you know, any kind of threats or anything like that, like is happening around the country now. It's just, just been loud people with lots of letters to the editor and chatting with their friends at the pub and, you know, misinformation and of course, social media doesn't always help, but it does help.
Any follow-ups to that? Another good question. Is there anything you expect to be on this year's warrant that you are particularly excited about and that is particularly noteworthy? I'll start by saying the, another attempt at a new public safety complex, which would be a new police station and a fire substation. This was introduced to the voters last year and because it's a bond article, it requires a 60% vote. And we had a low voter turnout last year in part due to, I believe, some weather. And it, it just lost by 40 something votes. I think it was 57%. It's much needed. Our police station, our public safety building now was built in 1978 and it was built for the town that existed in 1978. I could go on and on about that, but it's not ADA compliant. Both the police and the fire department have outgrown it. And it just makes sense to have public safety building on that side of town, on that side of the tracks for multiple safety reasons. So we will be reintroducing it. It will be, if not identical, it will be almost identical to the warrant article of last year. The price has gone up a little bit because of inflation, because the interest rates have gone up, but, but it's something that I'm very excited about, something I'm very passionate about, and I will be advocating for that. Selectman Chartren?
In addition to the public safety project, which will be on the ballot again for the second time, and that is very important to me as well. I always get excited and I'm a bit of a dweeb on this, so my apologies, but I always get excited when we have water and sewer improvements on the ballot. We fell behind significantly in the sort of last 25 years of the 20th century. And in the new, new century, we've been working very hard to have a steady drumbeat of water and sewer projects on the ballot. They almost always pass. Many of them passed in the era of very low interest rates, which was a double bargain. The interest rates are slightly higher now, but it's really important to keep those water and sewer improvements flowing. Sorry for the pun. When we do those each year, we pick a few projects and we pass them. It really allows us to keep our, our water and sewer system up to speed. And it's, it's one of the basic functions of the town to provide those, those two functions along with public safety and safe, safe passageway for pedestrians, bicycles and roads. I really see those as the core functions of the town. So I always get excited about the water and sewer, but you know, that's me.
I mean, I, you know, I sort of agree with you. Water and sewer is where, where it is. It is the most noticeable if it's going wrong and it is the most impactful and dangerous. So if our water is contaminated, that is, that is not a good sign. And I do think, you know, it is something that most people pay for. And so you have to, you have to be equitable and thoughtful so that we're not, you know, neglecting everything. And then there's this huge spike, which makes things, everything unaffordable and not equitable. I will also add something to Selectman Papakosentis's plug for the fire, the safety complex. You know, we have to special order new fire trucks because they do not, like the, the regular ones that are less expensive don't fit in our building. And so we're really hoping that Exeter voters, you know, look at this as something that both is a safety measure in terms of, you know, ambulance response times. We have a train, as you all know, that goes through town. And sometimes when there is a train that stops the response time and that's, you know, that can be a crisis. And also it would be nice to stop having to special order these small trucks.
Yeah. It would be economic.
It would be, it would be an economic savings in the long run. So just flag that.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No, these folks have chosen my two concerns too. So I think we have some consensus.
Yeah. Mine too. Though I'll give you, just to help Persson's perspective, I was born here. I've always lived here. I was a sophomore in high school when the fire and police station was built. I'm now 61. So think about yourself now and maybe somebody in your family and how long that building's been there and how things grow and change over the years. It probably isn't a good fit for the town anymore. So.
And just to add on to the, the aging of a building, in the Secretary of Interior Standards, any building that's over 50 years old is considered an historic resource to the town. So it has its, it has its 1979 architecture, but that's about it.
And I'd also be remiss if I didn't advocate for the passing of the budget, which allows the town to operate. And we've all sat on the Budget Recommendations Committee at some point, and that's where the budget season actually starts right around now. And they vet the budget and bring it back to the Select Board in early December and then we vet it. And then ultimately it goes to, to the voters of both the deliberative session and the election. But the general budget is what allows the town to, to run. So very important that that's, that's passed.
Friday, the 20th of October, all-day budget meeting kicks it off. Fun stuff.
All right. Any others on that?
I have a question.
Oh, please.
One quick question about that. How do you, what do you guys see as the best way to inform voters about issues like the safety complex and make sure that they understand all the facts and, you know, don't just see the price and get scared of it?
That is a great question. That is something that we really struggle with and, you know, all, at every level of government, everybody struggles with this because there is so, you know, it's hard to break through. People have full complex, you know, I was late because I was, you know, having to schlep my kid to soccer practice and, you know, these things sort of don't seep in unless you're really intentional. And so I remember we had, we organized walkthroughs of the police and fire station. We did a video, we did listening sessions and literally, guys, nobody came. And so it can, it can feel, it can feel really, really frustrating. But I do think, and I think you bring up a good point because oftentimes people are just looking at like, oh my goodness, this is a huge price tag. And I'm not, you know, sort of thinking about all of the, you know, what is coming off of the rolls as we're bringing stuff on and, you know, how like, all of this is sort of a dance, right? We're not just loading on costs so that your taxes are sky high. But it is, you know, it is a struggle. And so there are ways that we try to communicate. You know, we have worked, the Communications Advisory Committee has worked tirelessly to sort of come up with new ways to communicate with voters and residents. We are on social media and like Facebook and, and, you know, and send out newsletters and we publicize meetings and it's still really hard. So, you know, one of the things that we're wanting to do is to do all of those things. Also, you know, utilize a, a public service with our newsletter and really, you know, invite voter to voter contact and, and, you know, friend to friend, peer to peer canvassing and conversations and really, you know, ask folks to get involved and figure out the reasons why we're proposing these things.
Selectwoman Cowan is being modest. She's been doing great work with that Communications Advisory Committee, really trying to innovate how the town communicates with our, our citizens and our voters. And we've made quite a bit of progress. The work that was done to publicize the Siphon project that just had a special town election. I don't know if you caught any of that. Some of the recommendations of the Communication Advisory Committee that Selectwoman Cowan works with were implemented and they made a huge difference. So.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So what we did last year didn't work. We tried.
Well, it did, but there was the, right.
Public hearings across the street that staff showed up to and maybe two people. We had an open house that staff showed up to and our recording secretary with her child who had a very good time on the fire trucks.
I know. I thought, we thought, oh, if kids can play with the equipment and see the trucks, maybe that'll bring people out.
So we tried all kinds of things that, that just, what I say didn't work is just nobody, nobody came. And, and there was a, there was an article that was in the paper right before the election that wasn't 100% accurate in, in some of the, the details. So what we've learned, what we've learned is we had this Siphon issue that Selectman Chartren talked about. And we had, even though we met as a Select Board every other Monday and we had our interim DPW Director, Mr. Velasic here every other Monday, who would explain in great detail, but in a way that folks understood what was going on. But, you know, some people watch our meetings, some don't. So we did, we took Selectwoman Cowan's idea and we did a written piece in the paper and we also did a 15-minute video that was available on our website, it was available on social media. And the reaction that, I'll speak for myself, folks on the street loved the video. And in that 15 minutes, they learned about the project and that led them to start paying more attention. So we're going to be doing that with the public safety complex. We're actually working on that right now. We're going to take what was successful with the Siphon project and apply it to the public safety complex. So, you know, we've learned, we learned, right? We tried something, it wasn't completely successful. So now we're going to take something that did work and try to apply it to this public safety complex.
I, I think also the day of the voting for the Siphon, most, we have to at least have a quorum at all of our voting days. And most of the feedback, actually I'd say 99.5% people voting would say, don't like the idea that we have to spend the money, but it's a need and we've got to do it. And we, we did, it passed overwhelmingly. I can't remember the number specifically, but.
I don't think you can underestimate the power of people talking to each other. I live in town and was pretty knowledgeable about the, you know, the Siphons issue. And just talking to my neighbors and seeing them come out and vote, I think that's really powerful. And it's astonishing to me how many folks, as much as we try to communicate and educate, you know, through our website and other venues, how misinformed people are until you actually sit down and talk with them about the issue. Someone said that they see the dollars and they sort of glaze over. So I think that interaction, if you know something about an issue and you can sort of spread the knowledge and make sure people are getting the right information, that can be very helpful.
And powerful. Yes, absolutely.
So that segues beautifully to the next great question, which is, it's a three-parter. Why are there so many boards in town government? What motivates people to volunteer? And do we have trouble filling the positions? So we'll start with the third one. Yes.
I was just going to say, can we start with number three?
Yes, we do. And then I think we just sort of started answering the question, why we have so many boards and committees? It's these boards and committees that, that do the work for the town and do the work to advise the Select Board and in turn also do the work in communicating, at least for most of the boards and committees. Some boards are, the land use boards are statutory. Selectman Chartren?
Yeah, I think, you know, I used to think that all these committees, it's too much. But as I became more involved in town government, I started to see that the volunteers that staff those committees, when they're fully, fully, you know, fully staffed, they're the ones that kick off the, the word of mouth, person-to-person process that our finance director was just talking about. It's a great point you make, Corey. So the more, the more people we can get involved, the more the kind of word goes out across the town, because everyone has their network of connections, right? And if someone's involved in a committee and they're working on something, that becomes important to them and they start that word of mouth process. So I now think that the number of committees, commissions and boards is a virtue, not a, not a vice. From the outside looking in, it can look kind of Byzantine and, and too complicated, but it really creates that kind of involvement that kicks off that word of mouth that our finance director was just talking about.
Yeah, the, yes, there are a lot of committees. And what I would say, as somebody who, you know, works in politics, New Hampshire is a state that is largely run by volunteers.
You took my word.
We have one of them right here who serves both as a Select Board member and a state representative. And New Hampshire would fall apart if it were not for volunteers. New Hampshire's elections would not function if it were not for volunteers. New Hampshire's zoning, housing, boards and affiliations would completely fall apart if it were not, you know, like the expertise of our water and sewer system is run ostensibly by a volunteer. And I, I know because he's by across the street neighbor and he's been essentially helping us set these water and sewer rates for 30 years. He is a professional. He is an engineer. He knows all of this stuff and he, you know, lends his expertise to the town for free. And this is, you know, take Exeter and multiply it by all of the 200-plus towns that are across the whole state of New Hampshire. And this is how we, you know, how we are the state that we are, is we are run by people who out of the, you know, interest or goodness of their heart or interest in community or, you know, sometimes desire to tear that community apart, invest time and their talent in ensuring that we have a functional state and a functional government. Now, we could, you know, talk for a long, a long time about whether or not that is a good thing, because sometimes it is necessary to have expertise and, and, and actually pay people for their work. But that is not, that was not the question. The question was, you know, do we have too many volunteers and, or, you know, do we have too many boards? And, and we have boards that are, that arise when there is a need, like the Communications Advisory Committee. We formed that when I first got on the Select Board in 2018 because things, you know, things were static for so long in terms of communications and then they weren't anymore. All of a sudden there's social media, there's, there is a million new ways to communicate with people. There is the disintegration of local newspapers and, and public media. And so how do you, what do you do? We have to decide to address that. There are community, there are committees like the one that Selectwoman Belanger used to chair and now serves on the Housing Advisory Committee because we as a state and as a country are facing exorbitant housing prices. You know, people in New Hampshire cannot afford to stay here because they cannot afford to live here in terms of paying, you know, buying a house, paying rent even. So how do we address those needs? And that is a real thing. You know, there's a Sustainability Advisory Committee that is looking at ways to literally, you know, save our planet and how do we, how do we combat, you know, the huge impact of the environment and, and climate change? And so you'll see all of these new waters, water stations that are popping up around town. And that's, you know, in thanks to Greg Bisson and Pike Parks and Rec and the Sustainability Advisory Committee, like this is, we are wanting to do our part to make sure that we are not contributing to pollution. So it's sort of ebbs and flows and there is such important work that happens with volunteers every day that keep our state afloat. End rant.
Well said. Selectwoman Gilman?
Well, Molly, Selectwoman Cowan stole my introduction to New Hampshire government, but she's 100% right that we are run by volunteers. At the State House, 400 state reps, we each make $100 a year.
At the State House, 400 state reps, we each make $100 a year, because I know people, that's in the Constitution, so we can't change it until we want to have a constitutional referendum. But, but we are run by volunteers, and, and the committees that Ms. Cowan referenced are great examples. And one is also our energy committee, very active, led by a very strong woman that is, I don't know how she does it, she has literally energy coming out of her fingers, comes up with all sorts of activities and, and new, new ideas that are, should be goals for the town. And one of them, one of them we have is the LED streetlights, instead of having the, the old sodium, the old sodium lights, which is, we had to pay for switching out the lights to the, from the utility company to ours, but that'll get paid for in about five years, and then all the energy that's used by that light, or for those lights will come down. We're not going to be paying the company anything for using their poles or whatnot. It's just, we're just paying for the energy. Things like that. We also joined, the energy committee got us into the coalition, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And this is a group that all got together, different towns, cities, and even a county got together and become members of this one non-for-profit group and buy in bulk energy for each town to use. And so we, by doing that, by having a massive collection of users, when we purchase the energy, it comes in at a much lower price, because we're all spreading the cost out amongst the, amongst the communities. And the energy committee got us started on that, and now it's been successful, we've done it, and the rates that are available to us are, are much lower than the ones that come from our default provider. And it also, and this goes with sustainability, gives you the option from just using whatever kind of energy is coming through your, from your provider, like they might use gas-fired burners to create the electricity, or biomass, or something. With, with this program that we have, you can opt up to have, to ask for your energy to be coming from a place that uses 50% renewable power, or 100% renewable power. You're not going to see it, like, divided up like that, but you want the company that we use to be able to provide the energy in different ways. So those are the kind of things that are initiatives that as a select board, we just don't have the time to specialize on those things. And it comes from the community. They gather their like-minded people and they, and come to us and say, we want to be a committee to do this goal, and establish them. And so like, as the chairman said, the, they come to us with their solutions and their questions and bring us, and they bring us answers.
Thank you.
So I'll try to keep it brief, but I don't know if I can. I'm going to use the Housing Advisory Committee as an example. When I was on the board the first time in 2014, one of my goals was to start a Housing Advisory Committee, because I didn't feel we had a really good understanding of our stock. And that's before the housing crunch that we're in now and the housing issues. At that point, it was knowing what we have, where do we want to go with it, looking at even our tax exemptions, to see if they're effective, they need to be reevaluated, things like that. Over the course of time, we've had regional meetings to see if we can work on workforce housing solutions and things like that through our neighboring towns. We've also, some of the people that come to our meeting are from Rocking and Planning Commission, which is right here in Exeter. We have New Hampshire Housing that comes sometimes, we have Workforce Housing Coalition, the Seacoast one that comes. We, we are, we're trying to look at any and all possibilities of what could fit into our, not only our community, but maybe as a regional approach for housing options. But where other things tie in is the planning board right now, our town planner, is doing, he's, he's educating our planning board and the public on the different aspects of, he just did the third introduction, the third series this past Thursday, and it's, it's on looking at our zoning ordinances and what could, you know, to look at them with eyes, not just as numbers. And are they effective? Could we do something different with them? But he started with undeveloped land and the importance of that, developed land and the importance of that. So I guess what I want to stress is that the committees and boards are so important, they vet, they brainstorm, and that kind of helps us to come up with some solutions that we, we need to find, so.
Very good. And we're appreciative of our volunteers. And so, you know, we've, we've talked and tried to answer your question, but look around town. Exeter is now a Tree City USA, thanks to our Tree Committee. We have a solar array that the voters passed, we have the LED lights, we have the Energy Coalition that Selectwoman Gilman talked about, that's from the Energy Committee. You look around at the parks and the improvements, and the creation of a park improvement fund, that's thanks to the Rec Advisory Committee. You're going to see the water, the water spigots around town, that's thanks to the Rec Advisory Committee and the Sustainability Committee. We're starting to work on improved communications, that's the Communications Advisory Committee. We have an Arts and Culture Commission that has already elevated the arts and, and culture scene here in Exeter. They're working with another committee, the Facilities Committee, who's looking at all of our town buildings, and they're looking at the Town Hall right now. So it's not just in silos that they work, they work creatively and collaboratively together. But, so, but these are the things that you can see around town. And those are just examples. But, and we, the five of us, along with other town staff and, and other volunteers, are constantly trying to recruit people to join the committees. I think if you ask each of the five of us, we're here because we love our community. When we walk through that doorway to come into these meetings, we are, we are not our individual selves, we are select board members serving the, the best needs of the community. And, and.
That's very important, by the way.
It's, I'm, I'm very happy and proud to serve the community. I think if you ask most of the volunteers, they're doing it because they want to give back to this beautiful town that we live in and give back to, to our community, so. Anything else on that one? Because the next one is another good question. If you could change the jurisdictional balance between local and state national government, what would you change? Now let, whoever wants to raise a hand.
The jurisdictional balance. I don't know if it's jurisdictional. What I would like to have happen is for the state government to stop cutting.
Aid to municipal.
Aid to municipal.
That would be.
And, and say that it's cutting taxes, and then.
The great ideas that were initiated.
Yeah.
And they changed the percentage, yeah.
Yeah, and then there are, there are, there are things that the government is required to fund, and then it becomes our problem. And so we have to raise your taxes. And so it's actually not cutting taxes, you're.
Adjusting where they're.
It is adjusting where they come from, which is, which is trickery and, right, not being candid. So that, that would be my.
Yeah. I was actually raised in Minnesota. I reversed my father's immigration and moved to New England and New Hampshire. He came from here. One of the things that happens in this country west of the Hudson River is that many of the services are delivered at a county-wide level. Here in New England, services tend to be delivered at the municipal level. There is a tremendous amount of waste that happens with each town delivering these services town by town. There's, the reason why property taxes are so much lower west of the Hudson River is because you have that efficiency of delivering services at a county-wide level. So when I say services, I'm thinking of public safety, like police and fire. Libraries tend to be county-wide, not town by town. Water and sewer tends to be organized in county-wide districts, not town districts. If I could change one thing, I would change how we deliver these kinds of services and make it a county level, not a municipal level. Having said that, we have a nearly 400-year tradition of delivering at the municipal level, and it's very, there's a lot of inertia to that system. It's very difficult to change. When I first ran for the select board in 2012, one of my three goals that I ran on was starting to regionalize some of our services. We've made no progress on that, and that's really because there is no money from the state or federal government to incentivize us to do that. But that's the thing I would change, if I could change it. Which, again, 400 years of inertia makes it very difficult. But it's extremely expensive to deliver these services town by town. Incredible amount of duplication in a very small area.
Well, my, my change would, I joked in my committee at the State House that something came up that should have been a regional answer, and I can't remember what the issue was, but my answer was to, for Exeter, which, when it was originally founded, consisted of Exeter, East Kingston, Kensington, New Fields, New Market, Epping, and Fremont. My idea was to annex them all back, and then we could share our resources, our, our police and fire. And people, you know, would laugh, and I'd say, no, really, this is what we should do. So to Mr. Chartrand's point, you know, the regionalizing would, would be something that the state should look at more and let the counties, organize the counties better. And I'm going to step it up to the national level, because my husband and I have, we don't have an argument, we just are always consist, are always frustrated that there are only two senators per state. And if you compare, say, North Dakota to California, California has a climate, changes all the way up the coast from, you know, really hot to forested mountains. They have a bazillion, they have the highest GDP, it's one of the largest governments, or, yeah, GDP in the country, in the world.
In the world, yeah. Top 20.
Top 20, yeah. And, and it's, but the people who get to vote on it are just, or vote on what happens in California are just two people that represent all of that. Whereas in North Dakota, you have two people that represent a really sparse community of, or, can't, I can't think of my words, sparse population. So that would, that would be the thing, and, and I'll tell you, there's been a bill proposed for a few terms now to cut the State House down to 200 members instead of 400 members. And you can imagine how that goes over with members of the State House. So right now, as one of the, there's, we have four and say a half state reps, because we share one state rep with three other communities. I represent about, where's my money, about 3,000 people? So that, you know, if we, it's good and bad. I can talk to every, I can go around and meet everyone, but is, but it's hard to manage. And we're talking about committees and commissions, et cetera. At the State House, there is a new committee to study how many committees we have and what to do about them. And I'll speak from my experience, I was assigned to a committee just before COVID hit and the shutdown happened, and it never met, and it hasn't met since we've been back. And I don't think, some of the people that were, were assigned to it didn't get reelected. So it's, it's going to get crossed off the list, but we haven't heard anything yet about what's happening with those. But a committee to study committees.
Thank you.
My turn. So talk about regional, which is a fascinating idea, but try to get local, to let go of their control. That's a huge uphill battle, so.
And for me, again, I, I would change the level of state aid that municipalities received. What I would not change, though, and, and sitting here on a select board, it can be very frustrating, our form of government, SB2 form of government, which essentially, you know, any big decisions, particularly financial, have to be done by the voters at deliberative session and on town warrant. And it can, it can make things go at a snail's pace, it can be.
Once a year.
It can be frustrating. Public safety building last year, you know, if you have one, one chance in that year, and if, if you, you're not successful, you have to wait another year. But I like the history of it, I like the tradition, I like the size of our town, and I think it's incredibly democratic. And if I could change something, it would be having more people attend deliberative session and have it be what it was meant to be, instead of the 40 to 60 people that show up. It's, it's incredibly exciting. And again, it can be frustrating as elected officials, but I really think it is the best form of government for a community our size here, and that personally is something I would not change.
Yes, keep in mind that a deliberative session, all the budget work that's been done up till then can be changed by a vote, which means if there's something that's supported in some odd votes, and there's enough people there to, to make that change, that's what's going to go on the, on the warrant articles, on the ballot.
We've had some interesting years.
Yes.
We have a 40% tax cap.
Yeah.
Right. It happens at the school board level, too. My, my kids are obviously grown, and, but I still go to the school board deliberative sessions, because there are people there that try to literally severely underfund the school budget. So those deliberative sessions are very important.
So we have two more questions, and the next one, I'm not sure that I'm qualified to answer, but I would invite anybody else up here. The question is, quote, "What's up with the seals and the Exeter River?"
That's way above our.
I was going to say.
That's way above our pay grade.
Other than the fish, I, I really was hoping somebody else here was going to have some, because the dam's out, so the fish are coming in more and more. I don't know if that's what's attracting them. Paul, do you have any insight? No, okay. Not to put you on the spot, sorry. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
We could look into that and get back to you.
But I do, I do think that it is not a new phenomenon. I, I have talked to people who've known, you know.
They come up.
Yeah, they come up. And so I, I would just, I would, you know, personally would attribute it to climate change. And there is a, we have a change in climate and changing temperature, and it's, it's unnerving.
Yeah, but it's a good question, and one that I think we all just realize we don't.
Yeah.
We can speculate, but why? I don't know.
We'll try to get you an answer.
Yeah.
Seacoast Science Center.
Seacoast.
Don't go near them.
Right.
Leave them alone.
Oh, the, not the Seacoast.
Not the Seacoast Science Center.
Seals.
That's lovely, but the seals.
And the bald eagle's back, so can't beat that.
So the last question that was submitted is, is there anything you can do to improve nightlife for teenagers in town?
And I want to hear your ideas on that.
What do you, what do you want to see? I know, what kind of things are you interested in?
Any thoughts?
Don't be shy.
No, you know, doing this work on the, on the Town Hall, planning for performance of other, other events, that smaller, large, art shows, dancing, whatever, but more particip, yeah, more participatory by the, by the residents of the town, as opposed to a professional show or, or a big star coming, although that wouldn't hurt, but we do need ideas from the generation that is not the one I belong to.
Do you have something to say?
You have something to say.
Have there been any initiatives to, like, expand store hours in the town? So I feel like when I go out at night, a lot of the stores and restaurants close pretty early, so I don't know if there have been any motions, like, get incentives for restaurants and other things to.
What kind of hours would you like to see?
I feel like on Sundays and other weekends, like, I know some shops close at like six or seven, so maybe expanding it to.
Eight o'clock, right?
Ten.
Yeah, I mean, it's not really appropriate for me to talk about my own business, but in my work as a downtown businessperson, I have tried to jawbone business owners into having more expanded hours. It's a, it's a tough thing. A lot of them are single-person proprietors, and if. A lot of them are single-person proprietors, and if, if they're gonna stay open later, they've gotta be there. You know, I, I'm lucky in my business, I've built it to the point where I have quite a bit of staff, and we share the burden amongst all of us.
Is anybody wondering what he does? I'll share, you don't have to. It's Water Street Bookstore.
But, um, it's good to hear that, um, you know, you'd like to have, when is, what is the curfew for the academy? 10:00 PM for seniors, and then for, uh? 11 on Saturday? And then for the other classes? Eight, eight and then nine? So, yeah, we, we've got some work to do to, uh, to get, uh, restaurants and shops open longer.
Right now, it's difficult. Right now, it's difficult because people just, uh, places are just having a hard time with help. I know there's a restaurant I like to go to, um, and, and most restaurants, at least from my urban experience, are not open on Mondays, but now this restaurant is open on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings and, uh, you know, odd hours that I, uh, yeah, I'm not ready to eat, or it's too late for me to eat. And we've seen a couple of businesses close because they don't have the help, or a couple of food industry businesses close because they don't have enough help or get enough custom because there, people are either going out of town for food or, um, it's really, actually, it's really not enough help.
Yeah.
That is an issue. And that's tied to the, the housing issue.
Yeah.
So things.
Interconnection.
Yeah, there was a great business called, uh, Green Bean.
Yeah.
That, um, the owners actually decided to, to just lease their space to Auto Pizza because they were having so much trouble finding, uh, staff over the course of like five to 10 years.
Yeah.
It really wore them down. But, um, but it's great feedback, and I appreciate you all asking that question. I will use you to further jawbone my fellow business. Thank you.
Does she want to say something? She's just too shy? Go to the mic for us.
Yeah, so mine was actually less of a question and more of a, a clarification of the question. So I actually said this in class as a joke, um, and the, the irony was that, um, we couldn't have nightlife because we have a curfew. And so, but I guess I was gonna make that clarification earlier, um, but I, but I do agree with my classmate, wherever he is, Tanner's point, that, uh, I think having, like, restaurants open past, uh, 7:00 PM would actually be really ideal for a lot of students who have, like, extracurricular commitments and can't always catch dinner, which closes for us at 7:00. So I think it would actually make for some pretty good business for the town and also keep us full and happy, so.
What are the restaurants that are open late enough for you all to take advantage of?
Capital Thai.
Capital Thai, yeah.
McDonald's.
What about, um, what about the noodle place? Does that stay open later? Or does that close?
I'm not sure.
Oba, yeah.
Apparently, yes.
Okay, so, but more, more variety, more choice.
Do you all ever go to Shooter's Pub? Too far?
But see, what, your joke, your joke of a question opened up a good conversation, didn't it? You're welcome.
It's, it's interesting, though, historically, speaking of inertia, one of the things that traditionally limited hours of, of places that served, um, alcohol was the presence of the academy. There was kind of a, a silent agreement that, you know, this town would not get too far off the chain. Obviously, it doesn't work that way anymore, um, but, but historically, there was a bit of a, a silent agreement amongst the, uh, town leaders and the academy leaders that we would just kind of keep things to a dull roar, so it's, uh, it's a fascinating point of history, but, uh, again, it doesn't work that way anymore. Each business owner can kind of do their thing.
How late do shooters open for bowling? I mean, do you guys ever think to go bowling? It's really.
They do, they have bowling and they have Exeter Pizza.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it's really not that long, far of a walk for you guys, really. I mean, think about it, right? So give it some thought.
Thank you so much. I just had a question, um, just going back to, uh, select number, uh, Chartrand's point on, like, the relationship between the academy and the town, like, in general, like, how often do you guys collaborate on, like, such events and on policies that affect, um, our community?
That's also something that we've been working on, at least, I'll speak for the time that I've been on the board. And, um, I think part of it was the pandemic, and Principal Ross, who's actually gonna give an update, he's the first, uh, agenda item this evening, um, but we, we started that practice. And, and before, I think that, that PEA would come in periodically, but I think that since, since the pandemic and since it's ended, uh, Principal Ross has come in several times a year to give us an update, and we've had the conversations back and forth. I know the town manager, um, communicates with Principal Ross fairly regularly, um, but obviously, that's something we're interested in, and, and I know he's interested in as well.
And I, I've been on the board for 16 years, so I've seen quite a few different principals at, at the academy. And I think that's the start, that's the place that we start to go and kind of sign curves, depending on the principal is how much contact we have, um, because I think it's the leadership that, um, shapes, uh, the direction that we might wanna take. We, we offer, um, and probably it's a, uh, a symbiotic relationship in that, um, the, the academy is doing things and, and making, um, their communications online, and we're doing ours online here, but we don't trade each other's stuff. Um, and maybe that's something we ought to look at is, um, because I never knew what was playing in the new, uh, Performance Center, and until Ms. Lovey, Lovey Roundtree Oliff showed me, "Here, you sign up for this newsletter." Like, okay, that's easy. So maybe that's something that we need to do to, to make some kind of a connection if you wanna learn more about other events that are happening at night or during the day.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, the town and the academy over the last 50 years have really worked hard to work cooperatively. A great example of that was around 10 years ago, we actually, um, gave Gilman Lane to the academy so that they could accomplish their vision for the South Campus and make it that much more beautiful.
And I voted for it.
Yeah, there were a lot of people in town that voted for that. It was actually a special town meeting, similar to the siphon. Um, and that's a great example of how we can cooperate. In return, the academy allowed us to lease, um, a well that they own for, I think, 20 years. So there was a, very much a kind of quid pro quo cooperative approach to, uh, an issue that the academy had and an issue that the town had. And that's a great example of how we can all work together. None of us, I wouldn't be here if the academy weren't here. If the academy weren't here, my business would not be located here. And I don't work directly with the academy, um, but the scale of the town would be so much different that my business would not be, uh, would not be what it is and probably wouldn't exist. I probably wouldn't have chosen to open my, uh, my business here. So I see the academy as so important to this town, uh, in so many ways. And everything we can do to, to have cooperative relationships and push down any kind of town gown thing that raises, raises up, uh, it's just essential. It really began with, uh, who was the principal, uh, Bill in the 80s? Was it Kendra?
Steve Kurtz and then Kendra O'Donnell.
Kendra O'Donnell was essential, uh, when she was pre-principal, um, in really striving to connect with the town and eliminate some of the, uh, long-term, uh, kind of town gown enmity that there was. She was brilliant at it, and every principal since has continued that tradition. It's really been, uh, it's, it's been wonderful to see, in, in my view.
I was gonna say to that end, Principal Ross, and please.
I actually have a question.
I'll just say, when, when, um, when I came here as principal, one of the first things I did was reach out to the town manager and come and visit, and then, uh, Mr. Chair, we, we visited and it was pre-pandemic, but I thought it important to know the town and be known by the town, and also visited the chief of police. And we have many points of contact besides the principal. So, uh, our director of campus safety, Mr. Gravel, uh, has, and our director of facilities management have strong relationships with, uh, uh, people who manage many of the committees in the town. We are right now working with the town to explore the possibility of a new well with a much greater, uh, potential, uh, for water in our academy woods. So that's an example. Closing of Gilman Lane was quite important to the South Campus Master Plan without a doubt, but I think the relationship is extremely important. During the pandemic, when students couldn't go into town, um, we tried very hard to bring the town onto the campus in terms of, of, uh, food deliveries and, and business because we recognize the importance of our school to the economics of the town. And, uh, so we're quite conscious, we wanna be good citizens of the town, uh, strong members of the town and have a strong relationship. So I'm sure there are many, many examples that I'm not thinking of that go back in time. Uh, members of the academy faculty have served on this Select Board, um, and I'm sure have served on various committees. So I think, um, I think that there are many ways that we have, uh, strong relationships, and I come partly just for that purpose, to, to contribute to that. So I think it's a great question.
I have a question for you that kind of follows on the line of how, the relationship between the town and the, and the academy. When I was a kid, back in the 70s, um, there was an agreement between the town schools and the academy that, um, if one offered a course that the other one didn't provide, that we would just, like, the academy would let the kid take calculus, like I did. Um, and one of your students wanted to be in the drama group that we had, so, and we just went, you know, didn't, I didn't have to pay anything to go to the calculus class and, and, uh, it was just a trade-off. Does that still happen?
So I don't think so, not that I'm aware of. The, the high school used to be within walking distance, that might have helped, just the way the fire station used to be where Otto's is now.
Right.
I actually, that's when I was a student, I predate the current location. But, uh, I'm not aware of us doing anything like that, but I, there might be something that I'm not aware of.
Well, I think the high school's caught up now because you can learn calculus at Exeter High.
Yeah, it's a terrific high school.
Whereas when I was a kid, you couldn't, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'll defer other remarks until later.
Are there, go ahead. Are there any other questions that we didn't cover? So I know, Mr. Jordan, you brought your class before, and, and you have an open invitation. Obviously, it's a public meetings, but certainly, if you'd like to do this type, type of thing again, we, we'd love that, and we love having you come here, we love answering your questions. And, um, so, anytime.
Thanks for having us.
Of course.
For spending so much time, I really appreciate this very generous of you.
Our pleasure.
It is our pleasure. It's good to hear from you and see your faces and have a full room.
We actually have some pretty interesting discussion items, um, that, for our regular meeting here, and your principal is, is the first, so, um, Principal Ross, if you'd like to come up for your update? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the Select Board, uh, and to the Finance Director. So appreciate the opportunity to come and just talk about a few topics. And I think, I think I'll mention a couple that have already been discussed. On the issue of businesses open late at night, I wonder if it would be possible to have the businesses sort of rotate and say, "Well, we'll be open Tuesday night, and maybe somebody else could be open Wednesday night." Maybe that would be a way to have a couple places open for, for not just our students, but other people in the town without, uh, business having to make a commitment for the whole week. So just, uh, thinking out loud.
It's a great idea.
Wanted to talk a little bit about the construction that we're doing. First of all, another example of working closely with the town was the approval of the development of 35 High Street. Has a huge impact on our faculty because we have a shortage of housing for faculty. And so I appreciate the patience and the town's help with moving the, uh, the traffic signal for easy, uh, ingress, uh, access, you know, in and out. We're just about finished, still a little bit of dirt where there should be grass, but it's created a really spectacular neighborhood for our faculty, so that's been a big impact for us. The geothermal wells, the, the academy lawn that you've seen, I just wanted to give you an update on that. We tore up the lawn this summer to install 89, or 86 new geothermal wells. There were already 49 geothermal wells there, supporting, uh, Phillips Hall where we teach English and modern languages. And the new wells will support the new dining hall that is under construction along Spring Street, but also support converting the academy building to geothermal heating and cooling when that's renovated, starting in a couple of years. We're just about finished with that project, it's all smoothed out, and we're gonna, we will not put downside, we will seed it. So unfortunately, our students won't be able to use the lawn in the fall, but, uh, it'll, it should be in good shape for graduation in June. The dining hall, uh, we expect that to be completed by next fall. At the same time, we're renovating two dormitories that flank. So this is a brand-new dining hall, the previous dining hall, whether or not it just wasn't cost-effective to renovate that. So it's a pretty big project and causes some inconvenience, but I appreciate the town's patience there as well. And hopefully, that'll be, uh, as I said, completed, uh, by next fall. The next big project after that will be renovating the academy building. This is gonna be a massive and fabulously expensive, uh, project, um, uh, but it's a hundred-year investment. That building was built in 1914, and it's, it was expanded in the 30s when we introduced our Harkness pedagogy, but it's never been renovated. It'll cause some considerable inconvenience for our students because we'll, we'll have to close it down in, by thirds, and there'll be a period of time when the Assembly Hall isn't available. We will, uh, expand our Assembly Hall, so right now, it accommodates a little over 1,000. It will, the new Assembly Hall will accommodate over 1,300, so all of our students and faculty and large town gatherings will be possible there, uh, particularly when we have outside speakers that we sometimes make available to, to the town. This is all consistent with our, uh, Campus Master Plan that was completed in 2021. Um, and it's also consistent with our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan that we released last spring. Perhaps I should come another time and explain that in greater depth, but, uh, it has, it expresses three overarching goals. And the first is that students graduate from Exeter with a strong understanding of the fundamental principles of sustainability and the threat posed by climate change. There is sort of a, a two-part second overarching goal around carbon emissions. We have reduced our carbon emissions by about 65% in the last 15 years. We have a goal of getting to 75% against the 205 baseline by 2031, the 250th anniversary of our school, and then zero carbon by 2050. And of course, we don't yet know how we would do the latter, but we think it's the right, uh, goal to express. And the last goal is to integrate principles of sustainability into all of our programs and operations. So it's a, it's, to me, it's a powerful document, it was a long time coming, took a lot of work, um, and, uh, but the geothermal, the geothermal wells are part of that ambition. So let's see, I think that's most of the construction. But since we have talked about fire and police, I just wanna say, uh, we are enormously grateful for the strong relationship we have with fire and police, and for the times that they have come to our aid when we've needed assistance, including, uh, an incident, uh, in late August. And having them close by, um, is really important, um, so just wanna express that appreciation. I actually had an idea, maybe I'll throw this out, too, in terms of the new complex. Maybe on July 4th and Memorial Day, if you had an open house in the police station and the fire stations, you're not trying to convince anybody, I think, just an open house and people could climb on the fire stations, and maybe you had a few visuals about the news center that you're hoping will be approved, that might be a way to get people familiar with the service and just get them, get them in there climbing in and out of maybe police cruisers and fire trucks and just maybe that's a way to.
Good idea.
Get a little foot traffic. Uh, I wanted to talk about our crosswalks because they're an important way that we intersect with the town all the time. There's a tradition at the academy of, if I cross the street and fail to wave at an approaching car, everybody gets ice cream. And students ask me, "Are we gonna get ice cream?" And I, my answer usually is, "You will have ice cream, but it won't be because I didn't wave," because I think it's really important to express that appreciation, uh, when a car slows, uh, and I try to sort of hustle across. I don't, you know, I don't look at my phone and dawdle, I try to actually run across, which isn't very fast in my case, but it shows, uh, consideration. But we actually take this very seriously. We have mandatory, uh, training, uh, we have a safety assembly, um, at the beginning of the year, so we really talk to the students about how to cross safely and also how to show respect to the citizens. And we have at certain critical high-traffic periods, um, our own campus safety officer there helping, um, and helping in two respects, getting students across the street safely, but also when the traffic starts to back up, having the students, "Let's wait a little bit, let's create a little bit of our own backlog and let a lot of cars go through." And then on really big events like, uh, our rivalry athletic weekend or family weekend, there are times when we actually hire a police detail and have, uh, town police there helping us out. So that is something that we think about a lot, um, and. us out. So that is something that we think about a lot and actually talk to the students about it. And I think the students try to be sensitive to not, you know, to being respectful of the town. So we also worry occasionally, we've had, and it's very rare, but we have, students will know better whether that's a fair statement. But there are times when cars go by and say things are upsetting to our students. And I want to recognize that the police, the chief police, has been very responsive and wrote a very powerful op-ed my first summer here when such an incident occurred. So we certainly appreciate the town taking that type of hurtful interaction seriously. And I think it's usually not somebody of the town, somebody passing through the town. A couple of things I'll just mention very quickly, and then I'm happy to, of course, answer any questions. But I think we've had a very good opening of the school year. Just in terms of the fall flow, so you know, we just had what we call Exeter Leadership Weekend. So a lot of alumni and parent volunteers came onto campus. It's a pretty big event, but Family Weekend is two weeks hence, and that is a much bigger event. And then this year, we will be hosting our rivalry games against Phillips Andover. And so these are times when there'll be a lot of traffic in town, just to be aware of those. Yes, COVID, the pandemic is not over, but we think about it and manage through it very differently. We do have cases. As you know, we discontinued our public dashboard quite a while ago, and we no longer have the trailers in the parking lot, and we don't seem to be exceeding our capacity in the health center. Students, if they can, go home to isolate for the five days. We also have the support of outside experts for mild cases to allow students to actually isolate in the dorm and have the freedom to move about and be outdoors. And so it's less of a disruption. And hopefully, that actually makes it easier for students to get tested and report if they have any doubt. Just in quick passing, every once in a while, I hear that some members of the town have a mistaken impression that the Academy pays no taxes. And I just will say, we paid quite a bit of property tax, not on the academic portions of buildings, but certainly on residential units. And we have many residential units, including the unit where I live. So I think members of the town should know that we pay quite a bit of tax, and we're happy to do that. We want to support the town as we should. And then I think those are most of the things. I had a really exciting day on Friday. I'll just tell you about it. A graduate from the Academy, 1988, Claudine Gay, was installed as the 30th president of Harvard University. So it's a very exciting event globally, and it's also a very exciting event for the Academy. And maybe in some way, it's an exciting event for the town. It's a big moment in the history of the university. It's the second woman to be president of Harvard, and the first person of color. And she's quite an extraordinary graduate of the Academy and human being. And for me, it was quite a privilege to represent the Academy at that event. So perhaps that lifts your spirits as well. So I'll just share that with you.
Great.
So those are some of the things I thought I would report, and happy to answer any questions. And I want to express again appreciation for the strong relationship we have with the town, and in many ways, the town supports our school.
So can I just, and I'm sure I'd be saying this to the high school students if they were closer to town still. Do you guys please stress the no phones crossing the street? I live at this side of town, so I'm driving through this area at least three or four times a day, depending on if I have meetings. And I am so afraid between the, I really am for your safety, because we try to see you, but when you're coming and you're coming through those brick gates and things, you know, the line of sight is not as quick as you guys can move or not. Sometimes you're teenagers, I get it, but just try to put your phones down when you're crossing the street. Please, I'm always afraid. I mean, you can't go more than 20 miles an hour through there anyway. If we're smart, we don't. But we just want to keep you safe. You're part of our community. We want you to be healthy.
So Kim and Gilman?
No, thank you for coming in. I'm glad the timing was just right.
Thank you, students.
Good to see you all.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Principal Ross, and I was just going to say, I would like to have you come back to talk about the Sustainability Initiative.
Absolutely.
And I'll talk to Russ and we'll get that.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to do that and bring copies as well.
Good night.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
And Mr. Jordan, I know there was a mass exodus here, but let them know that our email addresses are on the town website. And if they have any questions, or if they just want to meet with us or anything, feel free to have them email us.
I'll do that, yeah.
Terrific.
They have a lot of homework to do, so.
Some of them might be hitting a curfew, too.
That interaction is so invaluable. It really is. Thank you for bringing them.
I think they get a lot out of it every year.
I think we.
As do we, yeah.
Well, thank you for honoring their questions with such robust answers. I know that will mean a lot to them, and I know they learned a lot.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. One year with your class, we had a couple of young women that were so excited about how the government worked that they came to.
Oh, my God, I loved that.
One of them got registered to vote in Exeter, and they came to the deliberative session, sat right up in the front.
Yes, I loved it.
That's the 40% tax cap one, yeah.
That was really interesting.
That was a PA alum. Yeah, I remember that. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
So anyway.
It was.
So we'll move along at this point. Thank you again. The next item on our agenda is just a quick vote. Several meetings ago, we had the town clerk here on behalf of the town moderator as well, reviewing the new ballot counting device. And at the time, the board took action and approved the expenditure of that. The Secretary of State now requires that the board formally move to approve using the machines and that they need, the Secretary of State needs the minutes recorded to fulfill the requirement. So if there are no questions or comments, I would then entertain a motion to approve the use of the image-cast precinct tabulators made by Dominion, and to have the recorded minutes be forwarded to the Secretary of State by the town clerk.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Pass is 5-0.
I would like to take a point of personal privilege here and just say how absolutely absurd this whole thing is, that we have to send this to the Secretary of State's office, and they have, so this is a fun research project. The Secretary of State's office has $12.8 million in HAVA funds, Help America Vote Act funds, sitting there that is not being used to modernize our local elections, meaning that taxpayers in Exeter, New Hampshire, have to pay to have ballot counting machines that work, because the ones that we've been using for a couple of decades now are out of service and do not work anymore. That's not true. They are, they work.
They're limping along.
But they break down, and they are so out of date that there is no infrastructure that exists to repair them anymore. So I object. I do not object to spending the money. I think we have to have democracy, and we have to have elections, and we have to have the integrity of the vote. I object to this.
Don't hold the money hostage.
Don't hold the money hostage, and this is bull.
You guys got us going tonight.
Thank you.
I feel very strongly. You're absolutely correct.
You are. Indeed.
It's sort of like the downshifting of the retirement system. Like, you have to have a retirement system, but we're not contributing to it anymore. You folks pay for your own guys.
Except they have the money. They just need to.
They have the money, and they're holding the other states hostage who have spent the HAVA funds. All right, dam removal. Let's talk.
I appreciate the formality of giving the secretary the vote. Thank you. With us this evening, our interim DPW Director, Paul Velasic, as well as Jacob San Antonio to discuss the pickpocket dam feasibility study. Good evening, sir.
Hello again. I gave a introductory memo for the packet today and said we'll be on hand October 12th. I meant to say October 2nd. So sorry about that. But we are underway with a feasibility study. And we have been under contract with VHB for that study, and it's an expensive study, $373,000 for the study. We also have a schedule for that study that was developed, and it was important for a couple of reasons. One is we have had a letter of deficiency that we are addressing with figuring out what we can do with the dam to bring it in compliance. And we have a deadline with that to try to make a decision by June of next year of what we're going to do with the dam. And then by December of 2027, actually do the construction or the improvements to complete that project. There are two grants at hand right now during the feasibility study. One was a coastal resilience grant, and the work for that has been done, and we're trying to finalize the money thing to get paid right now. And that was for $40,000. And then we have a stormwater planning grant through New Hampshire DES. And we have until April of next year also to complete that. And that was for $100,000. So the schedule that was developed has a star for next month, and the star meant that we were going to have a project update at that time. And that was going to bring our consultant, who's putting all of these options together, in and advise the river study or the River Advisory Committee what the latest understanding is of the project. And then a draft feasibility study that shows all the options would be completed in January of next year. And from there, we would roll out the presentations of what this all meant, and then have a final product, a final report by April of 2024, and then that would meet the stormwater planning grant portion for us. So as we are going along this project, a couple months ago, I had a phone call from Eric Hutchins. And Eric Hutchins is from NOAA, and he sat in on the River Study Committee meetings back when the Great Dam was being explored of what the options were for that. And he also sits in with NOAA when all the grants come out, and then looks to try to get money. And the money portion of it, when they're looking at it, is to enhance water quality or coastal resiliency, or fish passage, along those lines. And through the Great Dam process, there was a couple of grants that we could not take advantage of because we weren't that along to decide on a preferred option. And he advised, you know, don't even apply for these. But once we, well, once the town did decide to go for the dam removal options, then there was a NOAA grant also for just, I think, under $700,000 to help with the removing of the dam and also recontouring the river for fish passage. So a couple months ago, that was a long story introduction to this call, he'd say, hey, we've got another round of grants, and it's being funded heavily. Now, where are you with the project? And I go, well, we're studying it, and we won't even have the feasibility or draft feasibility study until January. He says, ah, this is the one, if you're ever going to get on, the one to try to get. And it's called, I gotta read my own notes here, Restoring Fish Passages Through Barrier Removal. And with that, you would pay for 100% for the design permitting and construction for a project that meets its criteria. So I called the engineer behind me, Jake, and told him about it. And then I think the last day of July or thereabouts, the grant did come out, and there was these online tutorials that you could sit in on and find out more about the grant, and of which Jake did do. And then afterwards, we talked, and it was basically for the removal of the dam and removal for, so that fish could pass through it better than the fish ladder. And with that, knowing that our options, what our options were already that we were uncovering through the feasibility study, it was like, well, I already know that X, Y, and Z needs to happen. Why don't you put something together, and we'll talk to the town manager and see if he'd be interested in this? Because now, really, this possible grant is a little ahead of our schedule. It's a lot ahead of our schedule, you know. We didn't plan on this to happen. So Jake came in and talked to the town manager, and it was kind of interesting. And we sent him packing a little bit more and said we wanted to hear like magnitude of dollars cost for our options here, so that we can see if this even makes sense in a little bit. And he comes back again, and yeah, it was enough to sit back and go, huh. So with that, town manager asked, how do we roll it out? And we weren't going to have a September River Study meeting. And it was only a week away. And so we had the chair go ahead and schedule a meeting where we can talk about this potential grant application. And with that, you have the slides of the presentation that I handed out, yeah, I got one, handed out earlier. And the only thing that's changed from what you see up here is that first page, you know, the dates changed. So basically, to take advantage of this grant application, the town would be, would need to be committed for the dam removal option. And with that, the River Advisory Committee took a vote with the people that were there and voted to recommend the dam removal as the preferred option with this presentation up here prior to even the draft feasibility study being done. So with that, the town manager said, come talk to you folks now. And we are prepared to give the same presentation to you if you would like to see it. And you have the slides in front of you. But at the end of today or shortly thereafter, we would need to know if we're going to apply for this grant or not. Now, the grant application is due October 16th, which is a very short timeframe. But after the River Advisor Committee meeting, I already gave him the okay to at least move forward so we don't lose time that way. So it's whatever the board's preference is, would you like to go through the same presentation?
So I've seen this, and the River Advisory Committee very vigorously recommended that the select board consider this. And, you know, I've sat with Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy and talked about this. We have a deadline of October 16th, which is the day before, it's the night, we have a meeting that night, but we need to really, in my opinion, see this presentation tonight and have a discussion.
Okay, very good. And I'll call up Jake to. And I'll call up Jake to do this. And we've got some lingo that
Thank you.
we use for dam removal, and we've been doing it because The Great Dam took me a little while to learn it. So if some of that lingo comes out and you don't know what it means, just please stop us and, because you'll probably hear it several times after that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
As long as you try to start, the first time you say it without the abbreviations, all right? Just, you know, your lingo. Try to do it just, and that way afterwards, people at home know what you're talking about.
Sure.
Remember, they don't have these little speaker buttons that they can push and say, I'm sorry, what was that? What does that mean?
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
I'm Jake San Antonio, I'm with VHP. I'm gonna give you this update on our feasibility study. So first off, I'd like to say thank you to the town, NOAA, the New Hampshire Coastal Program, and New Hampshire DES, who's funding this project. So I'm gonna start off just giving a quick overview of the dam and then start getting into the preliminary investigations with the alternatives, the hydrology and hydraulic studies we've done, get into some cost estimates on those options, talk a little bit more about the NOAA grant, and then we can open it up to discussion. So this is just a site locus. The Pickpocket Dam is out on the outskirts of Exeter, right on the Brentwood Town Line. You know, I know you guys know the town better than I do, but we're down over here, and this is located several miles upstream of, on the Exeter River. So this slide is showing an aerial view of the dam. So just to orientate you, you know, in this picture, this is a fish training weir, going to a fish ladder to help get the fish over this barrier. This is the dam proper. This is from, this is an abutment, and this side is another concrete abutment. And then there is earthen soil tiebacks that tie into high ground. The concrete spillway is about 130 feet in length. The entire spillway, including the earthen portions, are about 230 feet in length, and it impounds about 15 feet of water. On the plan view side, similarly, this is that training weir, this is that fish ladder, here is the spillway, and then the green is that earthen tiebacks. And the river flow is going in the direction of the blue arrows. Here's some more photos of the dam. One item to note here is, this is a low-level water outlet, and this is the upstream side of it. The, we, in order to do our survey, we had asked the DPW to open up the dam to prevent water from going over the top so we could get the boats close enough safely. The dam hasn't been operated in a while. When the, when the gate was open, there was a lot of rot found on the wood timbers that attached to this sluice gate. And those wood timbers are now completely rotted. You know, we couldn't open it completely. And, you know, post the survey, the town was able to close it, but it's still leaking. And with all the alternatives we're looking at besides dam removal, this locks, this sluice gate structure is going to need upgraded and replaced. Here's some more photos. You know, the photo on the top right is looking on the river left is the term I use, so with the flow of the water, river left is the left side, river right would be the right side going with the water. So this is standing on river left, looking across the impoundment at a residence home. Similarly, on the top left, that is still on river left, looking downstream, you see the fish ladder in the forefront, and then Cross Road in the, in the back. Bottom left, just to orientate you, that's downstream of Cross Road, looking back up at the dam. So to start off with our preliminary investigations, we needed to determine what the design storm for the dam is. So over to the left is, shown in yellow, I mean, over on the right, shown in yellow is the watershed to the Pickpocket Dam. And what we did was we developed a hydrologic model, so a model showing all the different portions of the watershed, and when rain falls on that watershed, how does it transform to runoff in the river? And with those calculations, we estimate that during 100-year design storm, so 8.4 inches of rain in 24 hours, that equates to just under 4,000 cubic feet per second of flow in the river. The dam is a high-hazard dam, and because it's a high-hazard dam, it needs to pass two and a half times the 100-year flow. So that equates to a design storm for the dam of 10,000 cubic feet per second. The state also has guidance out on how to account for increases in precipitation due to climate change. And the recommendations are to increase the 100-year rainfall total by 15%, so bringing it to 9.7 inches in 24 hours. We reran that model with that increased rainfall depths, and that equates to just under 15,000, oh, CFS as the climate change design storm. You see about that, almost 50% increase, because when you're talking about rainfalls of those quantities or depths, you know, as that falls, more of the water makes it to the waterways. You know, it's not being abstracted or locked in the vegetation. Once you've gotten that much rain, it's all making it to the river. So we've carried through now, you know, the regulatory requirement is 10,000 CFS, but we've also are looking at what it would take to pass the 15,000 CFS, knowing, you know, this summer, there's been a lot of rain, it's been a very wet summer, and it gives us a good idea that there's bigger storms coming. So we do think it's prudent to evaluate for climate change. So as part of the feasibility study, we're looking at many different alternatives, whether to bring the dam into compliance by various ways or by dam removal. I'll talk a little bit about the different alternatives that we're looking at. First one being dam stabilization. So dam stabilization is essentially keeping the dam as is, but reinforcing it so it doesn't overturn, armoring the soil tiebacks so that they don't erode during, during a storm. And that would really look like, you know, covering those soils area with like a rock riprap or something to help really armor it. You know, as I mentioned, it has been a wet summer, so we haven't done a full structural evaluation. That will be coming this fall. You know, it's better to be able to observe the dam when there's less flow. But that will really help us fine-tune that dam stabilization alternative. The other options we're looking at is dam modification. So that would be partial removal, maybe lowering the spillway so that it's less of a risk if it were to fail. Dam modification would also could involve raising those concrete abutments that I showed you earlier, or building a second tier of abutments further back to allow more spillway The other alternatives we looked at or are looking at are dam reclassification. As many of you may know, the dam was originally classified as a low-hazard dam, which means it would have to pass the 50-year design storm with one foot of freeboard. The dam, the town had gotten a letter of deficiency on the dam many years ago and asked the dam to revisit its dam classification. And to do that, you build a hydrologic, hydraulic model of the river, and you simulate that 100-year event. And during the peak of that 100-year event, you simulate the dam failing and breaching. And you look at how that flood wave moving downstream, whether it impacts any critical infrastructure or the potential for loss of life. And in doing that, it showed that there was one residence, one on Kingston Road, that during that dam failure scenario, would, the water levels would raise above their first floor. And that was really the main driver of what reclassified the dam to a high-hazard dam. During that same event, there was also several areas that water rose up but didn't get above the first floor of elevate, of properties, including some mobile homes on Camelot Drive. And because there was already a residence that it rose above the first floor, we didn't do a structural analysis to see if those mobile homes would slide or wash away. So to be able to look at reclassification, if we, if the town could acquire that one residence, they would still need to do a structural analysis to see if there was potential movement of the mobile homes. And if you were able to prove that they wouldn't slide and acquire that property, the third thing is Kingston Road is overtopped during that event. And given the class of that roadway, it would still trigger the dam to be a significant hazard dam. A significant hazard only needs to pass the 100-year design storm with one foot of freeboard, as opposed to the high hazard, which is two and a half times that. And then the last option we're looking at is dam removal and river restoration. So we developed a series of alternatives early on in this process, looking at, you know, just to help ballpark, how high do we, would we need to raise the abutments? Or how high, if we built a second tier of abutments, how much, how high would they need to go and what would those impacts be? And that's what I'm gonna go through next, is all those different options. So just to help compare, this is existing conditions. This section is a section through the dam itself. You know, we were looking at the photos earlier, this is the concrete abutments. So these are the higher parts here, the concrete abutments. Here is the spillway, spillway, and then this black area is where that fish ladder is. The area shown in red is a sediment island that's formed on the upstream of the dam. And this has, now, it's, it's not just a sediment island, it's all vegetated, treeed in. But it is impacting the conveyance capacity of the dam. So alternatives one and two, we looked at both leaving that in place and removing it. On the section view, the blue line across here is showing the forecasted water level during a 100, or during a current day 100-year event. And what this shows is that during a current 100-year, you're already starting to overtop the abutments. And to be compliant, you'd need to be, have one foot of freeboard. So you'd need to be below those concrete abutments. The green lines is the current day design storm, so two and a half times the 100-year event. And then the red line is, if you build in climate change, that is the two and a half times the 100-year event. So the first option we looked at is simply just increasing the abutment heights. So in this section view, you can see the, the section is very similar to the other one, except we just raised the abutments to help block that flow, see how high we would need to raise it, given that slot, and with a foot of freeboard. So the, on the right side of the screen, Paul was calling these my lava lamp drawings, but in the center is the dam itself. So similarly, that similar shape with the training weir, fish ladder, spillway. The black lines here denote the concrete abutments. And then what's shaded in here is how much fill would be needed to create earthen embankments that tie back into high ground. So with this option, under the regulatory, two and a half times the 100-year, you'd need to raise the abutments just under four feet. With climate change, you'd need to raise the abutments over six feet. One thing to note here is that with this option, to be able to raise, whether it be four feet or six feet, the project needs to extend back about 150 feet from the dam. This would impact two abutting properties and would require raising a residence driveway by 1.2 feet for the regulatory and 3.6 feet for climate change. With this alternative, we didn't remove that sediment island. And not removing the sediment island shows that we actually increased the FEMA regulatory event, which is just the 100-year, by .16 feet. And without a waiver or an exemption, wouldn't be permissible. Just to give you scale, help that lava lamp drawing mean more, I overlaid this on an aerial photo. Again, the dam in the center, the soil tiebacks. You can see it goes back about 150 feet, ties into high ground, all within the town's parcel. On river right, needs to go back about another 150 feet, but it crosses off a town property onto two abutting parcels. So this is alternative 1A, same as alternative one, except we're removing that sediment island. You know, this provides a slight improvement over alternative one. It shows a decrease in that FEMA regulatory event, so then it's permissible. The abutments would be, need to be raised 3.3 feet or just under six feet for the regulatory and climate change, and you'd still have those impacts to raising the abutters driveway. Alternative two. So this is keeping the concrete abutments at the same height, but creating a second tier at the backside of those concrete abutments. So this is creating more capacity within the dam spillway. We get similar results. This is, this one, we keep the sediment island. With this, we're getting a .13 increase to that FEMA regulation. And we're showing that the second tier abutments would need to be raised 3.24 feet for the regulatory, 5.17 for climate change. And we'd still need to raise the driveway on the abutters property by .6 feet or 2.5 Alternative 2A, same as alternative two, but now we've removed that sediment island. And this option, we'd need to raise the second tier abutments by 2.82 feet, 4.76 feet for climate change, and still requires raising, include, well, it doesn't, if we're just going with the regulatory, it doesn't impact the abutters property. If we're building in climate change, we'd need to raise their driveway by 2.1 feet. And then the last option, similar cross-section, but we've taken out all of the concrete infrastructure to represent the dam. This reduces that 100-year flood by just under eight feet, and that progresses upstream to, just, you know, it tapers in its benefit, but runs all the way up to Hagav in Brentwood. With the dam out, the normal water pool is impacted just about till, just downstream of Hag Road. You'd see the most difference in about a mile, a little over a mile upstream from the dam. Normal water levels would drop about, you know, on average, about five feet in that mile, and the river would resemble more what it looks like downstream of the dam of a free-flowing cobble river instead of a flat impoundment. So knowing the grant had come out, Paul had asked me to put some preliminary numbers to these alternatives. I've highlighted the three I wanted you to focus on in gray. That one being alternative 1A with climate change. That is coming out to a cost estimate of $2,145,000, including the initial capital cost for the construction and O and M and replacement costs over the 30-year timeframe. The second one is alternative 2A with climate change. That one came in a little cheaper with a total price of $1,982,000, with 1.3 million being an initial construction costs and design and permitting, and then the O and M and replacement costs over 30 years. And then the last option, alternative three, is dam removal. And that came in at the cheapest option at $1,063,000. And as the dam will be out, there'll be nothing to maintain. And so that has no O and M or replacement costs.
And that million is before any grants?
That is that is before any grants, I guess. So speaking of grants, as Paul
You had talked about the reclassification option also. There's there's at least one slide in there that shows implications of storm event where you would still need to do dam modification. Can you briefly touch on that?
So as I mentioned, we looked at reclassification. And, you know, if the town were able to acquire the properties, to show that there's no potential loss of life, the dam could be reclassified. But as because it still impacts Kingston Road and given its class roadway, it could only be reclassified to a significant hazard dam. A significant hazard dam is required to pass the 100-year storm event with one foot of freeboard. And what this slide is showing, the blue line is that current 100-year event. And it's showing that your abutments are already being overtopped in that event. And even if reclassification was possible, there would still need to be upgrades to the dam to bring it into compliance.
Let alone climate change.
Let alone climate change, yeah. So as Paul mentioned, there is a NOAA Fisheries Grant out, restoring fish passage through barrier removal. And the main objective of this of this grant is to remove barriers to fish passage. And it's really focused on sea run fish that spend part of their time in the ocean and part of their time in freshwater. And, you know, as I can see on your seal, you know, the airlife and herring in this area are really what this grant is aiming to fund is barrier removals to enhance that type of fish run. You know, as Paul mentioned, I sat in on a webinar to learn more about this grant. The grant, you know, many people ask the questions of, can we apply for this grant if it's for fish ladder enhancement or improvement? And their answer was, you could apply, but you wouldn't score very well, and it wouldn't be worth your time. Really, what we're looking to fund is barriers to fish passage and not enhance fish passage over a barrier. And they're looking to fund, you know, dam removals or even natural barriers to fish passage to help make the rivers more traversable to fish. There is additional emphasis, and you get extra points if it if it addresses community resilience, you know, and with a dam removal, our thoughts are, we can get claim those credits as we're reducing the flood risk upstream of the dam. The town is a local government, so it's eligible to apply. As Paul mentioned, there is no federal matching or cost sharing requirements with this opportunity. So that that is that stands out. This year, the grant also has been heavily funded. This is the second year it's been offered. Last year, it came out and it was $65 million. As opposed to this year, there's up to 175 million. Last year, there was a 30% cost share. This year, there's no cost share. They're looking for projects to be over $1 million or under $20 million. So if if the project's going to cost less than that, they don't want you to apply, or if it's going to cost more. Or at least you could only ask for up to $20 million. So our cost estimate has showed this to be a little over a million. So we're eligible to apply for this. As Paul mentioned, it is due October 16. So we've already started to draft that because it's a pretty short timeframe and a pretty big application to apply. And applicants are expected to hear July of 2024. So I'm during the process, that would be as soon as you'd get you'd start to see funds, but we'd probably hear if we won the grant sooner than that. So as Paul mentioned, the feasibility study is underway. You know, we've done a lot, but there's still a lot more to study. You know, the I put a list of things that we're starting to look at. I'm going to talk about a few of them, you know, cultural resources, we started to do that work. But we really wanted to fine tune the alternatives before we really started to look at, spend more time on that. So I don't have much to report there. Fish passage, you know, that that's something we've been studying and continuing to study. The fish ladder isn't as functional as it could be. So with, you know, dam upgrade alternatives, there'd likely be requests to upgrade the fish ladder to get better passage with dam removal. You know, there would be no, nothing stopping fish from getting past this location. Looking at recreation, how users are using the impoundment, how that may change with the different options. Invasive species, you know, looking at how the different alternatives may impact invasive species. You know, that is always a big concern with a dam removal option. As as, you know, the dam comes out, the water levels drop, what was underwater is no longer, you know, unless we take action early to help get native seeds in there, invasives tend to take over. So that is something we're trying to quantify and look at. We had great success with when the Great Dam came out by seeding right away with native species to help prevent invasives coming in. Water supplies, we're starting to look at the water supplies, looking at any public and private wells that may be impacted. We're also looking at, you know, there is intake structure further down on the Exeter Exeter River that we had to modify during the Great Dam, and whether taking the dam out would potentially impact that. The dam is, you know, my initial thoughts on that are the dam is a run-of-the-river dam. So, you know, as flow is coming in, it's going over the dam, water levels downstream really won't change post dam removal. There are some questions about, you know, during like a drought, can that reservoir be used to help meter water into the river so that there is water at that intake? And what I can say about that is, the impoundment is a pretty narrow valley, and it's really doesn't hold a lot of water. So though that may provide a short bout of water, it would dry up really quickly. And we'd also be limited during those drought conditions on what flow could be released more to maintain the ecosystem than drinking We're also looking at water quality and how water quality may change with the different alternatives. You know, we did start to look at sediment transport, and some of the early work we did was sediment probing within the impoundment to see what sediments have built up since that dam's been there, and also test them for quality. The good news is, all the samples that we took essentially showed it was fairly clean, the sediments in the river. We had one, we had one annulate being arsenic that was above residential standards. But that thought is that that is not due to industry, that is naturally occurring. And the samples downstream of the dam were actually higher than upstream of the dam. And as part of that, we also looked at where that sediment may go, you know, post dam removal. And what we found is that the velocities in the impoundment in that first mile or so will go up, and we will see some movement of sediment. The downstream stretch has been sediment star for a while, so it'd actually be good to release some of the sediment. But we also saw that at the railroad crossing and at, let me look at my notes, Court Street and at the railroad crossing, the river velocities do slow there. And there's potential for some of the sediment to drop out there with dam removal. So that is something that we'd have to take into account during the design and monitor post removal, if that's the decision the town makes. And then another thing we're looking at is infrastructure and how infrastructure may be impacted. So that may be the crossroad bridge and how flows may change. Another piece of that is looking at the landfill that's just uphill from the dam site, and how groundwater patterns may change, and how that may move some of the contamination at the landfill. I did look at, you know, GZA does an annual report, a monitor of the landfill. And I did look at their groundwater maps and how the groundwater flows. And as the landfill's uphill from the dam site, the groundwater predominantly flows back towards the river already. And the predominant flow is actually towards the downstream side of the dam. So with dam removal, my preliminary thoughts are that the overall groundwater patterns from the landfill aren't going to change drastically. You know, they are going to adjust as the water levels are lower, but the predominant flow directions are going to be in the same directions as they already are. Really, that that covers what we're going to be what we're already studying and continuing to study. And now we can open it up to discussion and thoughts from this board on how to proceed.
Thank you, Jake. So to be clear, the grant, the grant would cover the entire amount of the dam removal?
The grant would cover the full cost of the dam.
With no match?
With no match.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Open it up to thoughts and questions from the board.
I have a process question.
Yep.
So what is the, if we did decide to pursue the grant and dam removal, what is the process for approving that? Would there need to be a town vote?
So my understanding is, is that tonight, we are discussing whether or not we want to move forward with the removal of the dam. The first step would be moving tonight to accept, I'm sorry, moving tonight to authorize the town to move forward with pursuing and submitting the application for the grant.
The grant for a dam removal?
For the dam removal. If we decide to do that, then the town manager would follow up by contacting the administrator in Brentwood and start those discussions. And then my understanding, I would think we would have a public hearing at some point. But tonight, you're looking only for the board to move towards pursuing the grant, understanding that in doing so, we're supporting the removal of the dam. Am I correct, Mr. Velasic?
Yes, you're correct. But for the application itself, I would want a support letter from the town saying that we are in support of dam removal, and that's our preferred option.
That's fine with me.
So playing this out.
Playing this out, we get the grant, and we're committed to removing the dam without the town vote?
Would the town, would the town vote be to remove the dam? Or would the town vote to be to expend the $1 million? That's where I'm not, I understand what you're saying, but would it go on the warrant for the actual project? Or is it the expenditure of the project? And does the select board, if there's no dollars being spent, don't we have the authority to pursue a grant?
We're appropriating 100, whatever, whatever the number is, we're appropriating that money to do the project. So we have to have it on the on the warrant as even though we're not actually paying money, we're appropriating the money by.
If we don't get, if we don't get the grant, like we do with other, like I'm thinking of some of the parks and rec grants we've looked, right?
Then we wouldn't be able to take the dam home.
Right.
But I don't, we'd have to make the decision. We're rushing it.
So there's, there's a process question.
Yeah.
In terms of what we need to decide tonight, I am in favor of proceeding. I do have questions about what the process would be after that. But but they don't impact my decision to support proceeding.
Well, and couldn't we, I mean, what happens if we issue a letter of support? Fill out the, you know, with the caveat that we have to send this before, I mean, if we even do, which I don't know, I don't know what the what the warrant article would be.
How much longer before we, so the number you've come up with, is that going to, some of like the infrastructure, the sediment, any of that stuff, will there be an added cost that we'd need to go toward this grant? Or would the grant specifically cover just the dam removal? Are there any additional costs that we are not even aware of yet?
In that cost estimate, given the sediment data that I have, I've built in costs to excavate and dispose of a good portion of that sediment.
Okay, so that's included.
That's included, that's included in the estimate. I've included, you know, design and permitting. And there's typically a three to five-year monitoring period after I put those costs into the dam removal option.
Is it ready?
And that is in today's dollars, you know, and knowing the timing, I will be building some escalation in before we finalize and submit, if we have approval to submit, to account for, you know, the inflation that we've seen and.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
You got that answer before I even got to ask the question. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, so there was quite a bit of cost in terms of the contouring after the Great Dam removal?
Yes.
Is that built into that $1,058?
Yep.
That's so the whatever contouring that we know of now, that's built in there?
That is built in there.
So it's, it's everything?
It's everything.
To the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge.
Thank you.
We learned a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have, I'm sorry, I still had one more. You said that there might be an issue with wells. Would if we have a cost associated with that, would that, is that in there, an estimate?
I have not included anything to replace residents' wells. We do have a, I'll maybe defer to Paul, but we do have a legal opinion that the town wouldn't be responsible for impacts to upstream wells.
Upstream, okay. Thank you. I think. Thanks.
So, Mr. Chair, again, I'm in favor of proceeding with the process tonight.
I understand, yeah.
I do have questions about what the process would be if we get the grant, or what it would be anticipating that we would get the grant. But I don't need those answers tonight to support moving ahead.
Did you have a thought?
I agree with Selma Chartrand that we want to pursue the grant. I'm just not sure what happens when we get it. Right, or if we get it.
This is the first step, right? So this is the important step for tonight.
Well, let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
Is there a time limit for using the funds and completing the project?
Um.
Is it like a two-year project or, you know?
We have to lay out the schedule? I'm not, I, that's a good question. I'm not sure of that.
If it was in the grant application or not?
It may be. It's like a.
I understand. And the reason I ask is that if we do need to go to a town meeting, we have to figure if it's this one or the next one.
And just to be clear, the reason I'm in support is that we could take something that's going to cost us minimum $1 million if we decide to remove it on our own or if we decided to shore it up, which to me, that seems crazy, but, you know, a million and a half to $2 million. So this makes so much fiscal sense to pursue this grant and take a liability that we currently have in, in having to do something about this dam and basically taking care of it at no cost. And that's why I'm in favor of pursuing this tonight, just to be clear.
Crystal. And I, and I wholeheartedly agree with you to the point where I wrote a motion yesterday.
That's why you're.
To move forward on this. However, 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 we have to be crystal clear from, from Mr. Velasic and, and VHB that what we're agreeing to, we've got to be careful that this isn't, that we're not, you know, in my eyes, we're moving forward, we're taking a next step to potentially save over $1 million for a project.
Just over.
That more or less probably is going to get done, right?
At some point.
But I want to be clear with Mr. Velasic that if we write a letter of support, it's in a letter of support to pursue the grant? Or is it a letter of support to endorse the removal of the dam? Guys, I want everybody here to make sure.
Yeah, because that one's tough.
That would be both.
Yeah, that's my understanding. And I'm willing to support both. Now, obviously, if the town needs to vote and approve this, I'm not saying that I'm against that.
No.
And that's why I have questions about process.
Correct.
But given the tight frame, the grant application needs to be made in exactly two weeks from, from today, I think we would, it would be gross negligence not to move forward on behalf of the town, with the understanding that the town voters always should have their say if that is what needs to happen.
Yeah, and I understand the time constraints that we're under to do the grant, so that we're not trying to bypass the vote for the town. Okay.
Well, we may be locking ourselves into a course of action.
Right.
And I'm willing to take that, that chance. If that is your point, correct?
Yeah, that is my point. And if we do, if we do receive the grant and we're notified July of '24, I'm talking out loud, but you know, let's, everyone please contribute, if we receive a grant for the cost of the project, the select board would move to approve the receipt of the grant, correct?
Right, on, on whatever money, unexpected funds.
So, so a grant would be approved, come to us, we would approve the receipt of the grant. I'm think, I'm trying to think and I'm looking for some help. What would the warrant article be then?
Like we've done before, when we've had grants, we raise and appropriate the total amount for the project and we don't actually pay anything, but that, the legal, we make appropriations for things. And even though we don't have a match on this one, there are other ones that we've done that we have, it's a technicality that we're raising the money from getting a grant.
But we've also received and accepted grants, six-figure digits for projects that did not go on the warrant. So that's why I'm trying to juggle.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I see our staff side support moving to comment.
Well, I have a question. Paul, do we, or do we get the grant money or do we, like an SRF loan, do we spend it and then get reimbursed? Do you know?
I think you.
Spend it and then?
Spend it and get reimbursed.
So that it would, it would need to go on the warrant?
Yeah.
Then answer that question.
But I, I mean, we have to do something anyway because the dam is failing.
Something's going to have to be done.
Right. And so this is the cheapest, the, the thing that has been recommended by our, by our town committee.
So worst case scenario is we move, we move to move, we entertain a motion to move forward, we give Mr. Velasic the letter of support, we receive the grant, hopefully in July of '24, it would then go on the March 25 warrant.
Right.
Worst case scenario is if it doesn't pass.
Then we lose.
How much time do you need to get on Marches for '24?
How much time do we need before we can?
Like if we've heard from the grant, you know, that.
The warrant gets set in January.
In January.
Well, December and January.
Okay, so.
January.
We could, we, we could be that fast to put it on. I know, but if it, if we meet the deadline, I mean, we have to meet the deadline anyway because it won't be considered before then. And so we could hear, but I mean, I guess the point is like, we would be pushing for this even if there wasn't a grant.
That's true, but.
Not today, though.
No, not, not.
A million dollars.
Understood, but like, we are still under threat, like, we know this.
Something has.
Something has to be done. And so it would be hard for us to go to the voters and be like, well, something had to be done. We had this opportunity to apply for money, but we didn't. And now we have to do some, now we have to pay for it or we're going to do something more expensive.
We're not going to do that.
And we're not going to do that. So like, this is the only option.
And he already said, the grant that was available last year, there was a part that was forgiven, but it wasn't 100%.
No, there was a match, yeah.
Yeah, there was a match. That was what I was looking for.
So the grant, the grant is essentially accelerating the inevitable.
It is.
It is. And it, just to add, you know, Noah and Eric Hutchins have told us this is like once-in-a-lifetime funding. They're at a level this year with.
And they came to us. Corey?
Just wanted to thought, you know, could you put together a warrant for 2024 that read something to the effect?
Contingent on.
Should we?
Yeah, we've done that before.
We've done that.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Tax impact zero.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what works and what doesn't as far as how it's done.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, would that, would that jeopardize the timeline of, I mean, if, if, okay. I mean, I know we can do it.
Right.
But I don't want to jeopardize what you're trying to accomplish.
I think we can do it that way, yes.
So I have one more.
Yeah, please.
If I could, just that intake valve that was put in on the other dam, when the great dam was taken out, is, would that be factored in? Can we, I mean, I think that's kind of where it is. There's no place else to put that, right? If that's affected or that's not known yet?
That wouldn't be affected.
Okay. I, it was brought up earlier and for some reason I thought you said, we're not sure if that was going to be affected, so.
The conversation and the questions that we got asked were whether the empowerment behind the pickpocket dam could be used to meet or flow into the river to keep flow at that intake valve.
But that intake valve should still be fine where.
That intake, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nope, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. And also just to reiterate what Mr. Velasic said, the River Advisory Committee unanimously and vigorously voted to recommend the select board move forward with this, so. Any other questions?
Just the feasibility study and the work you still did, do you have an, do you have one that will be completed?
Can you say that?
The feasibility study and, and the other areas that you're still looking into.
Yeah, we had it on the schedule to, the draft would be done January '24.
Thank you.
And Paul, we're, we're moving to authorize you to move forward with the grant. You'd be the lead?
Yes.
Okay, with a letter of support from the board?
Yes.
Okay. Would the board like me to take a swing at a motion? I would entertain a mothen, I would entertain a motion to authorize the interim Public Works Director to pursue and submit the application process of the barrier removal grant offered by Noah and further to offer a letter of support from the select board to be attached to the grant.
Sorry, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Fox?
Part of that should be the endorsement of the dam removal option, preferred option.
Okay.
Want me to withdraw?
Please.
I'll withdraw my motion. Molly, do you need to withdraw?
I draw my second, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to authorize the interim Public Works Director to pursue and submit the application process of the barrier, to pursue the application, to pursue and submit the application process of the restoring fish passage through barrier removal grant offered by Noah. And for the select board to submit a letter of support endorsing the project to be submitted with the grant.
Okay, so moved.
We have to say to take the dam, for dam removal, that's what this is about. That's what the grant is for.
Right. And I would, but I put in the, I, I'll start it over again, but I was reading off of what the grant is. So do you want to withdraw?
I think Molly did that one, so she'll have to withdraw.
Withdraw.
All right.
The, the, the grant is for the dam removal.
I understand that.
I think that needs to be in the, in the question. I'm not trying to be difficult.
You're not, you're not, actually, you're being very helpful, but I'm trying to go by the wording on this and I will add that. That's not being difficult, select woman going, that's being helpful and collaborative.
Thing in his head.
What if you just inserted something about dam removal before the name of the, the grant program?
All right, let's try this again. I would entertain a motion to authorize the interim Public Works Director to pursue and submit the application process for the purposes of removing the pickpocket dam, the restoring fish passage through barrier removal grant being offered by Noah, and to further submit a letter of support and endorsement of the project from the select board.
So moved. Second.
Is that?
Yeah, I think so.
Any discussion?
If that works for you.
Those.
No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. No problem.
Don't wake over there.
Thanks for your report, Jacob.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Yep.
And our last discussion item this evening is our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Greg Beeson, with request for the tennis court repair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was here last in September for authorization to do some repaving of the tennis courts. Well, unfortunately, as we encountered the, the cracks, the cracks were more substantial than we, we had anticipated. What you don't see is sometimes the mystery. So we had to chase a few more, they're more profound and broader, some of them being wide and a few inches deep. Keep in mind that this was repaved 20 years ago. So we were trying to make do. We had to address the adhesive patches that were coming up because they were going to be tripping hazards and they were going to continue to come up. So this was the only alternative. We were going to consider doing the work in-house, but now that it's gone to a point, we were able to find a tennis court company out of Candia, New England Courts LLC, to be able to do the leveling and two courts, coats of acrylic paint just on the patched areas. We had wanted to do the whole entire lower tennis courts, but like everything else, COVID has driven up the price and to do this, the lower courts was going to be $80,000 just to repaint them after leveling them. So we were asking to, to authorize the used funds out of the RECA revolving fund. I had met with Cory a couple of weeks back to talk about the balance because I know Nancy always likes to ask. Currently, we have a balance of $151,000 in there. And we anticipate to finish up in early November. The delay was not only the substantial cracks to the courts, but the spring continues to hamper our operations in the park. And it hasn't gone as well as it could because we have to traverse over the, around the soccer fields. So it'll be put back together, but grass grows back easy, so.
What does that mean?
There's a few tire marks. Yep. Not on the playing surface.
Like deep, deep?
A couple inches, but they'll be flattened out after the work is completed.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. That's what your next question is.
Any questions for Mr. Beeson?
Yeah, I have a question. Thanks for your patience tonight. I appreciate it. How long will this repair last in your estimation?
Five to 10 years. There, there are going to be other alternative things that we're going to have to focus on to keep it sustainable. One of the reasons it cracked so much, the lower courts, is the, the 1970s design of a tennis court did not include drainage. So you have water flowing off the soccer field, which there's, it's pitched towards it and as well as the upper courts, the lower courts. So working on some kind of drainage to move the water around the courts would help prolong the life. But God willing, 10, 10 years we can get out of it.
And what would it cost right now to just redo all of our tennis courts? In your.
Time.
Funny you ask that, Dan. I was speaking to a vendor that I know pretty well and they just completed Tufts University just completed 16 courts similar. They did post-tension concrete, which is a little more durable in New England. 1.5 million.
So this is a good option.
This is a good option for now, yes.
That's for 16. We have five.
Yeah.
But still, do the math, this is a good option.
Yes. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be costly. Just to give you historical and everyone watching, when it was redone my first year, here an extra 20 years ago, it was two warrant articles of 125,000 back-to-back years, so $250,000 to do the surfacing.
For the lower courts?
For both.
For both upper and lower?
Upper and lower.
Yeah.
So fast forward 20 years and it's quite a bit more. And the difficult part of it, Dan, is eventually if, when they do need to be replaced, a certain, like a temporary service road needs to be put in there because there's no way to get back there.
Got it. Okay. Those are my.
Complicating things even more.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just having had my driveway paved, I want to ask about, you know, when we do paving roads, I know tennis courts aren't the same and they need to be more flexible, but is, what's the under, what's under what we see as the surface?
Well, we milled it down. So the lower courts, Julie, ironically, when we actually took up the surfacing that we milled, they had repaved over the existing paving. I can still see tennis lines on the court. So ideally, it should have been milled right down to a nice base coat, which the upper courts were. I'm not sure why the lower courts were not. And you can actually see it when you actually get into the fencing because the fencing is on the outside of tennis courts, which usually it would be located slightly inside the pavement. So I thought it was ironic, but yeah, it's just concrete. And that's where water gets underneath there and starts flowing. So we're also filling in some of those cracks to try to prevent it from redoing our, or ruining our patches.
Very good. Anybody else? And thank you for including the balance. The entire select board likes knowing that what the balance is. Some more information in your memos is greatly appreciated, so.
Not a problem.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $28,000.